I'm going to call this meeting to order. Please stand to salute the nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In attendance this evening are supervisors Fisher, Agizio, Cassiola, Fleer, and Barney. In addition, township manager Don Januso, Jack King, Director of Planning and Assistant Township Manager, Sean Bukowinski, Chief of Police, Bill Bodorf, Director of Public Works, Fire Chief Noel McMillan, Engineer Joe Sights of the Gateway Engineers, and Township Solicitor Attorney Gretchen Moore. Comments will be taken at this time for any item to be voted on by the board that appears on the agenda. General Township comments and questions will be addressed before the close of the meeting. Please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. I'll let you read the announcements yourself, but I'd like to point out that there are two things that did not make the agenda tonight as far as announcements go. Cecil Volunteer Fire Company Number Three will be holding a family bingo on Sunday, April 24th. The doors open at 11:00 a.m., bingo begins at 12:00 p.m., and the kitchen opens at 12:00 p.m. while supplies last. Who handed this to me? Carol, is, are this flyer in the back?
They're on.
They're on the table if you want to see one for yourself. Thank you. One other item of note is, in Washington County, they have a list of the 10 must-things-to-see. I'm sure you guys are familiar with the Miners Pavilion. It was put in a couple of years ago by our Historical Society. Would like to point out that number four on the top 10 must-things-to-see in Washington County is the Coal Miners Memorial in Cecil Park. So, a huge congratulations and thank you to our Historical Society who worked for a really long time to make that happen. So, thank you. We'll move into our discussion items.
Thank you, Cindy. Number one is discuss the request of the low bidder for the 22 Mowhinney Road Site Cleanup Project to withdraw their bid. I believe the Board of Supervisors is in receipt of a letter from the low bidder, independent enterprises, stating their reasons for withdrawing their bid. And it's my understanding that the second low bidder is ready to proceed with the project if they so wish to award it to them.
And it's item number 77, 2022, on the agenda this evening.
Yes.
Can we talk about that now?
Yeah, you can if you want to.
Joe, I want to make sure that he provides, that he's onto certified landfill for asbestos.
Sure.
And see that slips for every truck.
We could make that the condition of the award.
When we get to the motion, Ron, we'll include that as part of the motion so that it's on record.
It's part, yes, it's part of the bid, it's part of the bid requirements, but, you know, we'll just reinforce it. Okay. Item number two was discuss the fuel surcharge adjustment requested from Stewart Contracting. I believe you're in receipt of a memo that was prepared by Dan, which outlined the fuel adjustment following, there is no language in the contract related to the PennDOT specifications being followed, but PennDOT does have a threshold that you have, if you have in excess of 50,000 cubic yards of earthwork, they're, the contractor would be entitled to a fuel adjustment. The project has 179,500 cubic yards of earthwork, which exceeds the 50,000 minimum. And we did some calculations, and if we'd use the March 2022 Diesel Fuel Price Index, the adjustment would be approximately $43,000 for the total quantity of excavation based on the PennDOT formula. It's not a straight, you know, percentage, there is a specific formula that PennDOT has in the 408 that takes into a fuel adjustment factor. So, you know, it's up to you whether you want to make any consideration for payment with a change order, anywhere between 0 and 43,000 is what Dan stated in the memo.
Well, he explained to me that he's only going to request this for moving the dirt, not for excavating the lines or anything.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, he being Stewart Contracting.
Mike Stewart.
That is also an agenda item this evening.
So, let me just elaborate, Joe, on the Diesel Fuel Price Fluctuation Adjustment. That reference that you give to PennDOT specifications is normally a contract item, and it's in Section 110 of PennDOT's 408. And what it basically does is establish an index based on the cost per gallon of fuel when the contract is bid, the month that that contract is bid. And I believe this contract is bid in September of last year, so that would be, that would be the, with the term as the bid in the proposal. Even though it's not in the proposal, that, that price at that time is stated in the proposal when it's put out for bid.
I agree, you're correct, though.
So, that, that stands as the basis for any adjustments down the road. Then, of course, they publish a monthly index price, or a monthly price that goes against that. And then there's a calculations, as Joe said, and if, if the calculation is, deviates by more than 10%, it's 95% to 105% from what was actually bid in the contract. Then there's a, either a price increase or a rebate in the case of falling prices, back to the owner of the project. So, hopefully that clarifies what that price index does.
And now, let me add to what Bill's saying. You know, this was calculated using the price index in March. He didn't perform any work in March. So, you know, if, in order to track this amount of earthwork, we're going to, he's going to need to get with our inspector on site on a daily basis and tell us how many cubic yards he moved in that day so we can keep track of earthwork being completed in April, May, June, and so forth, if that's what you so wish to do. Rather, and the reason I'm saying that, you know, rather than saying, you know, we've got 179,000 cubic yards of earthwork, okay, I want paid for 60,000 this month, 60,000 next month, and 60,000 the following month, let's keep it, you know, compartmentalized by the months in which the work is actually occurring.
Yeah, that's the basis for which that's determined. It's a month-by-month.
Correct, it's a month-by-month.
Month-by-month production basis, but it's based on the month, the standard is, that it's judged against is the standard that that, in the month which that contract was bid. In this case, whatever the standard would happen to be, and I don't know what it was back in September of 2021, that's the basis for comparison with his month-to-month production for excavated cubic yards of material.
But we could set a cap for the amount of money that we want to.
Again, this wasn't, this wasn't part of the, this contract.
Right, it wasn't.
So, I don't know how the board feels about that.
So, why are we having this conversation?
Because we got a letter from him requesting it.
What are we going to do? Every contractor comes into Cecil Township, we're giving them a free fuel card?
No, I know.
Is anybody asked Youngblood Paving, you know, asphalt went up $10 a ton this year from last year, he's driving trucks, equipment all the way from Newcastle.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely something we can consider when it's, when we get to the agenda item, we can have this discussion. But right now, it's just a discussion topic.
Mainly want to give you the information and the background on how it goes about being calculated.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? The next item is item number three, discuss the schedule for the completion of the 2021 paving contract A through Youngblood. I believe you may be in receipt of a letter dated March 25th, 2022, from Youngblood, giving us the timeline for the completion of the work, scheduled to begin concrete work the week of April 4th. They actually started on Friday with the earth, with the earthwork, and then they will be there starting next, by the end of this week, early next week, doing the milling and the paving. And all work should be completed by April 22nd. So, that's their schedule for completing the work in contract A. That'll take care of Ridgewood Drive and Wilson Avenue. So. Okay. Item number four, we took bids last week, received one bid for the 2022 pavement maintenance program for the completion of Fibre Mat Seal Coating on South Point Boulevard from Morganza Road to North Technology Drive. Russell Standard was the low bidder in the amount of 228,200. We had estimated that at 294,625. This is a process that we've used in past years. Similar work was completed in 2019 and 2020. So, it's your pleasure to whether you want to award it this month or next month, because work's probably not going to be occurring until either June or July of this year, once the weather gets better and is more conducive to the seal coat process.
That's Morganza Road South.
Morganza South, yeah, up, yes.
Joe, I have a question.
Yeah.
What is the skid resistance level of this product?
I believe we have a skid resistance E.
Okay, because my concerns are, with oil being on the surface, we know what the speed limit is, 35 mile an hour down there in South Point Boulevard, but people don't normally go that. And we've had people sliding around on other roads we've had this product on, so.
No, we haven't. Which roads, Frank?
O'Hare Road.
That's not, that's not the same product. That's the surface treatment. O'Hare Road's a surface treatment. That's an application of number 67s, then an application of 3/8s.
Yeah, it's a double seal coat.
That's correct.
But it's basically what we're doing down here on South Point Boulevard.
Not the same.
Different process.
It is the same.
It's not, Frank.
Bill, is it what you put on Mowhinney Road?
I mean, I just don't feel we should be putting tar and chip on a major throughway of four lanes through, through South Point.
We've applied it out there before with great success.
Yeah, I know, with a lot of complaints from the residents. Fairways Landings, you put it on? Do we not put that on Fairway Landings?
It, we do. Do you have recent complaints up there?
Yeah, I've had complaints on it.
Recently?
No, Reese, it's been a few years. It's been, what, three, four years ago?
It's a proven product, Frank. We've been using it for years out here.
Continue.
Okay. Next item was the Horn Road Bridge Project. We had opened bids for the Horn Road Bridge. We got one bid from Thornberry in the amount of 242,250. We had 10 contractors who were provided with the bid documents. Six of them contacted me prior to the bid opening, indicating to me that they would not be bidding. And then there was four contractors that were left, which resulted in the one bid we received. I contacted the other contractors who did not bid to try to get some feedback from them. Some of them indicated to me that they had struggles with communications with the railroad, and others indicated to me they had subcontractors who didn't want to work on the bridge due to the train traffic. So, we have the one bid from Thornberry in the amount of 242,250. It's an agenda item for your consideration, and Bill and I have talked about this, and we think this is a fair and equitable price to get this work completed. The contractor is going to be responsible, have a right-of-way agreement with the railroad. When I contacted the Pittsburgh and Ohio Central's parent company, the Genesee and Wyoming Railroad, they indicated that they wanted the agreement between themselves and the railroad and not the township. So, there's a, there's a fee for that agreement. There's also an expedited fee for that, and one of the requirements is that they're going to require flaggers to be on the railroad tracks every day in which the contractor's working out there. So, that adds cost to the project. Nothing we can do about that. So, you know, the, the train runs, although the train runs three days a week, we got our flagger out there five days a week. So. Bill, you have anything to add to that?
I don't. I mean, this is, this is what you get when you work with, over, over top of a rail system.
Right.
Joe, don't they generally work 410s?
They could probably work 410s, sure.
I think that's what they did down in Cecil, right?
Yeah, I mean, that option is theirs, I mean, if they request to do that, you know.
Yeah.
That's something, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what kind of control the railroad would have over that, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
As far as their flaggers.
Yeah, I don't.
We would have to coordinate that with them.
Yeah.
I don't know if their flaggers work 410s or not, so, again, that would be contingent upon the Ohio and Pittsburgh Rail agreeing to that.
Right. Okay. The next one is, is to discuss the capping of the gas well at the McConnell Trails Development. There's a shallow gas well that the developer was not aware of when they were preparing their site plan for their land development. It was brought to our detention by the developer. They're working with the DEP to get it sealed off, and as part of that, they're trying to get the final location, which may end up being in the road right of way up in McConnell's Trail. So, that's something that the developer's trying to work out with the DEP and is in the process of completing that task. There's no cost to the township, that's correct, Tom. So. Okay. And then I'll comment on agenda items as we move forward. Did I miss something?
The, oh, wait, do you want to talk about it, or you want me to talk about it? Okay, so, the last item is mine, I guess, to talk about. Discuss the request of Ironwood HOA for speed control devices to be placed on Ironwood Drive. They came before us when? In the fall? Yeah, so, in the fall, they did the presentation, asked for the speed control devices. I don't know if you had the opportunity to check your email over the past couple of days, but Alexis from Gretchen's office had sent them a proposed agreement, which they, I don't say denied, but what would you say? Yeah, redlined, and, and made some suggested changes. I don't, I still don't think we're at a point where we're ready to vote on it. One of the things that, do you, can I borrow this? One of the things that they had asked for was access to the data, which we don't believe we can provide to them. If, if I was a resident, requested the data for a speed control device, it would be denied under the right-to-know request, so I don't think we can provide that. And then they also have declined covering our costs, essentially. They want us to split the cost and pay for whatever costs we incur, and they want to cover the costs that they incur, related to, specifically related to legal fees. I don't know how you feel about it, but I think that this was a request, this was not something that we initiated, this was their request, and so they would need to cover, agree to cover 100% of the cost before we would consider it. Thoughts? Not everybody at once. Anybody have a thought, opinion? Okay. So, I guess at this point, I would just say that they can agree to what we sent them, the agreement that was sent to them, or it doesn't get added to the agenda in the future. Did you, I can see you here, do you want to say anything? Do you want to comment? I'm just going to give you the opportunity since it wasn't.
Yeah, we just responded to the initial terms of the agreement. We were supposed to start working in progress, but we redlined that document.
Yeah, I have it here. I actually, I saw the red line this afternoon. You know, I think that honestly, the two biggest sticking points are, we cannot provide you the data. So, we can put the, we can allow you to purchase the equipment, and we can put it up, but, and Sean, step in at any point if you're disagreeing with what I'm saying, but we cannot provide you with the data. So, that is a non-negotiable item as far as we're concerned.
What is the dat, data?
So, whatever information that comes from that speed control device. We can, you can utilize it to, so that cars are driving past, they see they're speeding. If whatever data comes from that comes to the township, it's ours, and it will remain within the township. It would go to Sean as our chief of police, and any police officer that would need it, it would potentially go to our legal department, but that would be as far as it would go. We could not release that information, too.
I think our ask was that it would not be unreasonably denied, because at this point, we don't know what the data is. So, to reject the sharing of data when we don't know what the data is seems, you know, a little bit difficult to understand.
The data would be the information related to speeding.
More specifically, what is the information? If there, if there's some things that might be beneficial for the neighborhood to know, we're asking that that be shared with us.
Can you give me an example?
I, I don't. That's why I said that it would be not unreasonably denied. Until we know what the data actually is, how can we reject it?
Well, I think we could say legally, any data request would be subject to the right-to-know law, and, you know, a request would come in, it would be, you know, reviewed pursuant to the law, and a decision would be made. I just can't envision where that, that kind of data is probably going to be speeds and license plates, and all of that information, under the right-to-know law, is probably not going to be able to be produced.
No, I, I think we were more interested in if there was any data related to summarizing what the, the average speed was over the course of a day, a week, a month, information like that.
Sean, can we even provide that to them? Go ahead.
It depends on what device you're getting, actually.
Right.
So, and Dawn has a device that calculates that information, we do too, but it gives pie charts, different times of day, speed, how many axles a vehicle probably, size of vehicle, it depends on what device you're buying.
Right, right.
Until we make a determination on what you want to purchase, that's when we're going to find out the data.
I am curious to like.
We're not looking for personal data, if that's, if that's the concern.
I'm curious what you would do with that information.
I think it's just best for us to know what it is so we can notify the residents in the neighborhood where we see the problems based on that type of data.
But then what's the, is, what's the solution from there?
It's just a notification to keep everybody informed so that we can pay more attention to it as a neighborhood.
Okay.
And as far as the legal cost, I can't imagine that it's going to be significant. We were just thinking that, you know, we, we pay for our costs, the township pays for their cost. It, it's not a deal breaker in our mind. But again, we, we didn't think that that was a, you know, a significant amount of money.
I would say it's a deal breaker for us, because this is not a project that we initiated, and, and we have incurred, I wouldn't say significant, but we have incurred legal costs associated with putting this agreement back together, and, you know, the sharing of it back and forth. So, for us, you would need to agree to cover our legal costs as well as your own. And then if, if you're, if you want to have those conversations and then get back with us, there's a potential, if, if my board agrees, it could potentially be on the May agenda for a vote, but.
Well, that was our understanding, that the agreement was work in progress. We presented our comments today, and we assumed that there would be some sort of response.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to resolutions. 75, 2022, consider approval of pay application number three and final in the amount of $65,197.26 to Youngblood Paving for work completed on contract B of the 2021 pavement maintenance program. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? I'll second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass is 5-0. 76, 2022, consider the fourth release of financial security posted for the installation of public improvements for the overlook at South Point Phase 7 from $117,308 to $55,058.30, a total reduction of $62,249.70 as recommended by the township engineer. Joe, do you have any idea what they're doing at the end of Deer Creek Crossing?
They're making a lot of repairs to the storm sewer, which we found from the videotapes that they provided to us. There's areas in which they have to replace the section of storm sewers that were crushed during installation or by damage as a result of the utility companies putting their main lines in. We found it, in some cases, the water lines laying right on top of the storm sewer and crushed it.
Great. That's what I thought, but I was curious when I was over there. Okay. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass is 5-0. 77, 2022, consider award of the 22 Mowhinney Road Site Cleanup Contract to Stranishia Excavation Inc. in the amount of $59,000. Ron, you wanted to add a, a piece to this motion, that they have to what?
Provide, that it's cited for asbestos, the dump where they're taking it, and provide receipts for the loads.
Okay. Do I have a, a motion to that effect? I'll make that motion. Do I have a second? Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Pass is 4, I'm sorry?
No.
Oh. 3-2? Frank, you said yes?
Yes.
Okay, I was just making sure. 78, 2022, consider award of the Hon Road Bridge. Yes, it passed, 3-2, you're fine. 78, 2022, consider award of the Hon Road Bridge Repair Contract to Thornberry Inc. in the amount of $242,250. I know that's reasonable, but that is a lot of money for that bridge. I know, I know, it's, it is what it is, and bridges are expensive, and, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass is 5-0. I'm actually going to make a motion to Table 79, 2022. I want to have a, I think we need to have a conversation based on the information that we got with Joe Sights, with Mike Stewart, maybe send him a letter back requesting, like, would he be agreeable to your proposal of tracking month by month, and then it can come for a vote in May? Is that okay?
And then we can discuss even a percentage of it.
Right, right, we can kind of go from there. So, is, do I have a second for tabling this? Moved and seconded, all those in favor of tabling this?
Aye.
Aye.
Frank, are you?
Aye.
Okay, sorry, I was looking now. So, 5-0 for tabling. 80, 2022, consider rezoning application 2021-0033 for Silver Creek, location Silver Creek Lane, McDonald. Requested change from R1 Low Density to R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District, applicant Miranda Holmes. We held this hearing on Ju, I said June, wishful thinking on my part, March 21st of this year.
The only thing I want to add is, I want the emergency road 24 feet wide, back a curb to back a curb, not 15 feet wide.
The emergency road for where? That, that won't be on the rezoning, that'll be on the PRD.
That has nothing to do with zoning the property.
Yeah, when we get to the PRD, we can include that.
You can attach conditions on a rezoning.
I'll make a motion.
I'll, I'll second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
4-1. Frank said yes, it was 4-1. 81, 2022, consider rezoning application 2021-039 for Zero West End Drive, location West End Drive, McDonald. Requested change from R3 Village Residential to C1 General Commercial Zoning Districts, applicants Roland and Lynn Gagliola. Do I have a motion?
Move that we denied the application?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of a denial of the application? Aye.
No, and the reason why I'm saying no is that I was under the impression that all the local homes that were on our roadway got letters, and they had no complaints. I'm not sure that it would be a good idea just to not offer the commercial zoning. That's my opinion, my opinion only.
Okay, it was denied, 3-2. Do you need a? Frank said no, right? And Darlene said no. No problem. 82, 2022, consider application 2022-0003 for Barnes Brother Consolidation Plan, subject to the vacation of the school street right of way by the township. Location 212 Muse Bishop Road, Muse, C3 Village Commercial Zoning District, applicant HMT and Associates. The planning commission recommended approval on March 17th, 2022, contingent upon addressing comments from the township engineer's letter dated March 14th, 2022. Joe, were those items addressed?
The items were addressed, there's a few misspellings that I have. The items were addressed, there's a few misspellings that have to be corrected, but that's all. Everything else has been addressed.
And it's actually, sounds complicated, but it's a simple consolidation subdivision plan, that's all it is.
Yeah, just a really long motion. Yeah. Do I have a-
I'll make a motion. Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass is five-zero. Eighty-three, twenty-twenty-two. Consider authorizing the township solicitor to prepare the ordinance regarding the vacation of a portion of School Street associated with the Barnes Brothers consolidation plan. This just goes hand in hand with the motion above it. Do I have a motion?
So moved. I'm seconding it.
When a property owner used to ask for a piece of property be vacated to them, normally we require their solicitor to prepare the ordinance and our solicitor to just review it. Is there any problem with them preparing the ordinance?
Do we even know if they have counsel?
I don't think they do. Yeah, I don't think they have counsel.
How would we pay for them?
I just, is it really that big of an issue? I mean, I can't imagine it's a lot of hours.
We hadn't done that before. We always, their attorney prepared it and their attorney just reviewed and said, yep, it's ready to be approved and recorded. So, I'm just not familiar with the, your involvement.
My understanding is it's moving the road too. I mean, we, this is our road, is that right?
Yes.
So, it's moving our road, so there really is, I mean, vacating the portion of our road that now crosses onto the property, onto their property. Do you understand? Like, that's the vacation.
Right, we own it and we're going to, they're going to own, they're going to own it. They're going to take ownership of that portion.
We're vacated, the road's going to be-
Shifted to the right.
Shifted to the right, correct.
Can you just do me a favor and step to the microphone, just because we're live streaming and recording?
Brad Barnes. The road is illegally on our property right now, most of it. Part of it is on that right away. So, that's what she's trying to explain, that they got to move it anyway. So, they were just going to do it all at once, if that makes sense.
Is that part of the, would that be part of that consolidated subdivision that we just approved also?
Yeah.
Correct. As part of that subdivision, the part of the road that crosses over is going to be vacated and then the road's going to be shifted, so it runs straight essentially. I think if you look at a map, it kind of-
There's a dog leg.
Yeah, dog leg.
Dog leg right now.
Because I was told that we owned that section originally when we first started talking to the school district. But I don't care if it's part of the consolidation, that's fine. So, we already approved that part, so I'm fine.
Yeah, so let's just let Gretchen-
Very minor cleanup, there would just be an ordinance and a hearing and-
Yeah. All right. I'll make a motion for eighty-three, twenty-twenty-two. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass is five-zero. Eighty-four, twenty-twenty-two. Consider application twenty-twenty-two oh oh five for Pashu Consolidated Plan, location one-ten Cambridge Lane, Cecil, R-three Village Residential and C-three Village Commercial Zoning Districts applicant Augie Pashu. The planning commission recommended approval on March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, contingent upon addressing comments from the township's engineer's letter dated March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Again, clear to go?
Everything's clear.
All right. I'll make a motion.
I would just say, I think, Joe, it's either this one or the next one, but I think this is the one where we just want to make sure we review their deeds to make sure that the property line's correct, because there was some confusion as to who owned some of those street properties.
So, after it's approved, will you reach out? I think I see him. Oh, you're right there.
Yeah, we just want to look at the legal description to make sure.
Just at the end of the meeting, you can come over. Thanks, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass is five-zero. Eighty-five, twenty-twenty-two. Consider application twenty-twenty-two oh 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 six for the Pashu Site Plan, location one-ten Cambridge Lane, Cecil, R-three Village Residential Zoning District applicant Augie Pashu. The planning commission recommended approval on March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, contingent upon addressing comments from the township's engineer, township engineer's letter dated March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Good to go?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass is five-zero. Eighty-six, twenty-twenty-two. Consider enacting ordinance two twenty-twenty-two, an ordinance modifying the UDO by deleting and replacing sign regulations.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to give everyone an update that we did have a hearing on this site ordinance a couple months ago and after, we got some comments at that hearing and after the hearing, we got some additional comments from South Point. Some minor changes were made. They weren't enough to rise to the level to require us to have another hearing, but it has been posted on the township website, so everyone can see those changes that were made since the last hearing. But I categorized them as minor. There were some dementional changes, some cleanup, and the current one is posted, if anyone had any additional questions. Okay. But it's good for a vote if you all want to move forward.
Is there a motion?
I'm in motion.
Yeah, we had it.
I'm in motion.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass is five-zero. Eighty-seven, twenty-twenty-two. Consider termination of the existing CMYSA agreement related to use of Klinger Park. This one and the one-eighty-eight go hand in hand. We're replacing the existing agreement with a new temporary use agreement with the intent of future negotiations by July thirty-first.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass is five-zero. Eighty-eight, twenty-twenty-two. Consider approval of a temporary use agreement with CMYSA for the spring soccer season at Klinger Park. The agreement will terminate on seven-thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two, if not renewed.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Moved and seconded. Darling, did you have something you want to say?
Okay, so if the agreement will terminate on seven-thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two, does that mean that we take complete?
We take, we have complete ownership of it now with the termination of the old agreement.
Okay, then they don't have any right to it after seven-thirty-one?
Unless we, if we negotiate another use agreement, like we negotiated a use agreement for the spring where they're able to use it two days a week and then a couple hours on the weekends for their games, we would negotiate a similar agreement for the future term. But it's in our hands at that point whether we want to-
It's definitely in our hands and we have to say about it. Okay. I make that motion.
It's been moved. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass is five-zero. Eighty-nine, twenty-twenty-two. Consider scheduling a workshop date. This is not actually, this is not actually, doesn't need to be voted on, but we need to schedule a workshop date to work on amending the international fire code. I apologize, that should have been a discussion item.
Wouldn't it be for Mac to set up?
Yeah. So, I worked with him to add this as an item. So, we announced in what, October, Mac? I forget, something like that, that we were repealing, our intent to repeal the international fire code that we had adopted. We need to set up a meeting with Mac, a public workshop, to work through some of those changes. I just need your availability to do that.
Mondays are still good.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Mac, Mondays aren't great for you though, right?
I can make it happen.
What about Monday, April twenty-fifth at seven?
I think so.
Okay. Does that work? April twenty-fifth at seven, we're going to hold a workshop.
Okay.
Okay. So, that doesn't require a public vote. Ninety, twenty-twenty-two. Consider the Board of Supervisors minutes from Monday, March seventh, twenty-twenty-two, regular monthly meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Five-zero. Ninety, twenty-twenty-two. Consider the Board of Supervisors minutes from Monday, March seventh, twenty-twenty-two, regular monthly meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right, we did. Ninety-one, twenty-twenty-two. Consider the general fund invoices from March first through March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Make a motion.
I'll second it. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass is five-zero. I have a few items that we need to decide whether we want to vote on. They should have been added, it's my fault, I missed them. The first one being Jim Pashu is coming back again as our seasonal parks employee started March, Bill, March twenty-eighth.
March twenty-eighth, yes. Last Monday.
As we all know, he's phenomenal and he's currently at a rate per hour of fifteen dollars. He does much more for us than, and Bill, jump in at any point.
Yes, he does maintenance on the equipment as he uses it, greases it, cleans it, changes parts on it. He's a former employee as a mechanic in that shop up there, retired eight, seven years ago, and I was fortunate enough to talk him into coming back and work part-time. So, he takes very good care of our equipment in addition to the service he provides to the township and the parks. I always refer to him as Uncle Jimmy. The kids love him for what he's done to the parks, you know, so.
That's awesome.
Bill?
Yes.
You mentioned everything except keeping track of the number of hours between oil changes.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, he does that too.
Okay.
So, he currently is at a rate of fifteen. There's been a request to increase him to eighteen. Since it's not an agenda item, I'm going to have to open it up for public discussion if this board is okay with adding it as an item. Is everybody okay with adding it as an item? Does anybody have any public? Okay. We'll take, do I have a motion to add it?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
So, this is just to add it to the agenda. It's been moved and seconded to add to the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Five-zero. Any public comment? No public comments. Now, we'll take a vote to actually make the change from fifteen to eighteen. Do I have a motion to make?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass is five-zero.
Thank you to each of you.
Thank you. And thank, thank you, Jim. He's usually here. The last item that we have to add to the agenda is the, hold on, the two thousand six Ford Explorer that had sold last month that we voted on, the sale fell through. There is a new buyer, so we need to add, consider award of bid for the two thousand six Ford Explorer to Hector Lopez in the amount of one thousand seven hundred thirteen dollars. I have no idea what that says, Dawn. This was a, oh, meanness. That's okay. This was a meanness of bid item. Is everybody okay with adding this to the agenda? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So, now we have to actually take a vote to whether you want to sell it. Do I have a, oh, I'm sorry. Anybody have any comments on this one? Hopefully, the sale will go through and we don't have to do this again next month. So, do I have a motion to actually sell the vehicle?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass is five-zero. Before we move into citizens, general comments and questions, I have two quick announcements I want to make. We held an executive session on, I almost said June again, I'm really stuck on June this month. On March twenty-first, following our rezoning hearing, it was related to the legal advice related to Klinger Park negotiation, which was pending litigation at the time. That has since been voted on on our agenda. And then, everybody's favorite topic, the four lanes on fifty to two lanes. We are still trying. We just got a letter from the PennDOT basically saying, and it's a short letter, I'll read it quickly. It was, this was in response to Dawn's letter. It says, "This letter is in response to the March tenth, twenty-twenty-two, letter concerning the signage on State Route fifty near the intersection of State Route one zero zero one. The location in question is a lane merge area where State Route fifty reduces from two lanes westbound to one lane westbound. The department received a complaint from a nearby business stating that the area should be reviewed for improvements because of a dangerous condition caused by merging traffic. The district traffic unit reviewed the area and found the length of westbound traffic had to merge from two lanes to one lane and did not meet the current standards. Throughout the years, configurations like this have caused issues and led to crashes. As a result, signage changes were programmed. The changes shifted the merge area east of the intersection with State Route one zero zero one, allowing more length for traffic to merge from two lanes to one lane. The changes were made based on the department publications and sound engineering principles." I shouldn't laugh, but that made me laugh. Should you have any other questions, please contact. I reached out again to Jason, state rep Jason Ortiz today, or yesterday, and he had said that they are considering a change, but when I reached out to him today and let him know that we received this letter, quite frankly, he was frustrated. We all are. I'm sure if you drive that road like I do on a regular basis, I was almost hit yesterday because, as we all know, the right lane ends and the left lane does not, and it says, "Merge right." So, you're merging into a lane that's ending. It makes no, it makes literally no sense. So, we will continue on this. Gretchen, is there anything you could do to help us or, PennDOT's just ignoring us.
We can try to call them too. I mean, they like to ignore people.
Yeah.
I mean, we can try, you can try, state reps.
We actually had-
Calling from the community, all of those things help build pressure.
Yeah, we actually had Miranda Holmes, who's interested in building that Silver Creek Nursery, has offered to reach out on our behalf because they were here for that rezoning hearing and they also agreed that it made literally no sense. And they actually have a traffic study that they performed as a result of that, of trying to put in that housing plan right there. So, they were going to reach out to PennDOT with that traffic study to try to encourage them to change it back. I have not reached out to them to see, you know, what the result of that was, but they were going to try to. I'm going to post, I'm going to have Jack post on our website the link to PennDOT. Go on there and complain. That's the only thing they're going to respond to. They're literally just not, they're not talking to us. They won't talk to the state rep, they won't talk to us, they just, in their eyes, it is what it is and they're not going back. Yeah, exactly. So, does the board, any other board member? Go ahead.
Also, Cecil Alliance Church has been having problems, tractor trailers coming off the turnpike, they're coming down to the trestle and can't get through it. They're backing up to the church and tearing their parking lot up. The guy from Worcester Engineering, he was going to try and get a change so that he would he was gonna try and get a change so that, uh, he would go straight down onto fifty rather than coming down off the hill and trying to go through the trestle. So Jason's working on that in the turnpike.
You wanna give him credit for the inlet cleaning, too? You wanna tell him about the inlet cleaning?
Oh, yeah, and Jason worked with me, and we had PennDOT from DePauli Road down to the four lane. They cleaned out all the inlets to try to eliminate some of the flooding. I know UG is still getting a lot of water coming down off the railroad. Pardon me? And railroad won't even return a phone call.
Yeah.
Bill's even tried, right?
I've tried. They're tough to deal with. I mean, even over on Han Road when they, it was an issue that, uh, was, uh, threatening their, their track. I had, I think Dawn and I spent the better part of thirteen, fourteen months trying to get them to come out and look at the erosion that had taken place from the, uh, Charters Creek, uh, scouring their embankment. The, uh, ballast for the track itself was about two foot from the, uh, timber, a railroad type, and they finally showed up out there. It was, they're tough to deal with, so.
If there's no other comments from the boards, I'm gonna open it up for citizens, general comments and questions. Please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. It's a race.
Wendy Johnson, fourteen oh eight Yorktown Drive, and right after the Alliance Church issue and, um, the Route fifty issue, yesterday, again, the Georgetown underpass was blocked by tractor trailer that tried to get underneath the underpass. So, we are very frustrated. It's happening too frequently. It's wasting the police's time. It's wasting the volunteer fire department's time, plus the fact that we are blocked in. If we need help from Peters Township to get into our plan for a fire, they cannot get through that underpass when it's blocked like this. It's happening three, four times a week. So, we're asking that you try and get the state to add either blinkers or something to call attention to the height signs, something to make it so this stops. It's constant. Uh, I did a com- uh, petition just yesterday morning, ask them for your assistance with this issue. Already a hundred people have signed it. It's still out there being signed. I have a copy of it.
Asking for our assistance?
Huh?
Asking for our assistance?
Yes. Asking for you to contact the state, tell them this is a safety issue for the residents there, that it blocks the fire departments, that it's blocking us constantly, and it's a safety issue, as well as wasting taxpayer money with the officers having to come over to help people get out of the jam.
Have you reached out to Jason's office?
Yes.
And?
And he did recommend that we ask for your help, too.
Like a le- we'll do whatever we can. Let, I'll reach out to him and see what we can do to work together. I mean, obviously, we don't get great responses from the state, but we'll throw our support behind whatever we can do to help.
We appreciate it. And I'll leave this with you. And like I said, you know, we can provide pictures. I'm sure the police department has tons of pictures and.
We, I get tagged every time it happens in a picture on Facebook. Yeah, yeah. It, we, we understand and we support it. If there's anything we can do, if there's anything we can actually help with, we're more than happy to do it. So, I'll reach out with Jason. You're welcome. See what we can do to help.
Sean, is there anything you can do? I mean, you have a record of how many wrecks are, right?
Well, when they violate it, we cite them, but, I mean, we can't stop them from going there, whether it's GPS or whatever. We get called and we cite or we get them out of the jam, like she said.
Kenny Strain. Forty-twenty-two, Sir James Drive, Windsor Woods. I want to publicly stand up here and thank anybody on this board and the illustrious township manager we have that helped me finally get a light, a street light on North DePauli and King Edward Drive when you pull into Windsor Woods. Now, we started this journey about three years ago, and they finally got it taken care of, and it's awesome now. You can see when you come in there to turn. And I just wanted to stand up here and publicly thank anybody that's on this supervisor board that was involved in helping getting that done, and I know Dawn put a lot of frustrating work in that, but that's the reason I'm standing up here today. I just wanted to publicly thank you guys for doing whatever you did there.
Thank you. It's nice to hear good things. Anyone else?
Before we adjourn the meeting, Cindy.
Hold on, there's another resident, and then you can.
My name's Tom Irwin. Um, I live one on five Partridge Way. So I'm the new vice president, um, for Canhamack U-Soccer. I just want to say thanks to the board for giving us a chance to make things right, especially Frank and Cindy. Um, we have all new board members, so we're trying to move forward the best we can. Hopefully, we can work together in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, darling.
Okay, uh, Supervisor Fisher, I know there has been board communication about a settlement offer made to the township for the Connor Samuel well pad. In a period of transparency, we, should we not take a vote at a public meeting such as this to make a decision on that settlement offer?
There's already been a public vote taken.
No, there hasn't.
There's a public vote taken to deny the.
When?
The condi- I have, what was the date?
Deny what? The original?
The original use? That was in the executive session. That wasn't here.
To deny the conditional use application. Nothing has changed from that initial denial of the conditional use. Yes, Range submitted a settlement, which this board was not interested in considering. So, it goes back to the original settlement.
Okay.
For the original vote.
So, we're gonna go back to court on April twentieth, I mean, no, yeah, the twentieth day of April, twenty twenty-two, at three P M. to fight them again.
They're suing us, darling. Yes.
Well, yeah, they're suing us because you haven't accepted the settlement.
We are under no obligation to accept a settlement. We held a, we held a public.
Let's, let's put it this way. I want to make a motion to prove the settlement offer for the Connor Samuel well pad.
You can't. It's, it's not an agenda. I mean, you have to get the board to agree to add it as an agenda item first, and then.
Well, you want to make an agenda item now? So that we can make a motion to approve the settlement before April twentieth, so we don't have to spend any more taxpayers' money that we're, a case that we're gonna lose?
So, the rule requires that before a public vote can be taken, it has to be added as an agenda item. I then have to open it up for a public comment.
I'll second that to at least discuss it.
Okay. So, it's been.
He, he seconded.
That, there has to be a majority in agreement to add it to the.
Well, let's met, let's take a roll call.
A roll call vote for what? To add it to the agenda?
Yes, or accept the settlement.
No, it's.
Right, it would just be, yeah, there's a motion seconded to add it to the agenda, so they should vote on that, and if there's a majority to add to the agenda, then it would become an agenda item.
Take a vote. All those in favor, or, all those in favor of adding this item to the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll add it to the agenda. I don't care. I'll take a public vote. So it's been added. Anybody have any public comment related to this? So you understand, Range, uh, we held a conditional use hearing, uh, for both the Connor Samuel pad as well as Bernard Schultz. Bernard Schultz passed, um, this board, I think five-zero, and Connor, or, yeah, Bernard Schultz passed, Connor Samuel was denied. Um, Range has submitted a settlement request to this board for the Connor Samuel pad. Um, at last check, there wasn't a majority of the board interested in considering the settlement, so it is simply moving forward, which is the, with the original plan, because Range has sued us in court. Over the denial. I'm sorry?
Why was it denied and the other one approved?
For very, for a lot of reasons. And I'm happy to give my personal reasons when we get to the vote, but, um, one of the, one of my biggest issues, and I've had this conversation numerous times with Range, is the close proximity, well, two, actually, the close proximity to our existing Augustine pad, um, and the close proximity to the intermediate school. I don't, I personally don't think that it's fair to put the, the impact, and I don't mean like environmental impact on the same small group of residents. Whether you're willing to admit it or not, there's an impact. There's road closures. There's all kinds of various, um, things that you have to deal with, with living next to a well pad, having road closed, so constant truck traffic, that kind of stuff. Um, so I had asked, can we move it? Or could we do the same, um, drilling from Augustine, or is there a way to do it? Bernard Schultz passed because essentially it's, it's in another location. It's not impacting the same group of residents. Nobody around it ob- objected. People that lived near this one objected. My second reason was, it's less than three thousand feet from the intermediate school. One of the things that I asked of Range, or it's approximately three thousand.
No, it's thirty-eight hundred feet away from.
I'm sorry.
The school.
I stand corrected. It's thirty-eight hundred feet.
Thirty-eight hundred feet.
I didn't think that was right either, but I don't have the number off the top of my head. In any case, one of the things that I talked to Range about was, you know, if there is an emergency, if there's a true catastrophic emergency, which God forbid doesn't happen, but there's the potential to happen, um, what would you do? You have five hundred, approximately five hundred fifth and sixth graders in that building. They would turn it over to us. I love our firemen, I, but they're volunteers. There's no way that we could handle a catastrophic emergency that close to our intermediate school.
Would the train be real? That's what?
I have no cont- I don't have, I would vote to deny the train, but I don't have a control over that. My point is, we went back to Range and we said, "Work with us on this," and they presented essentially the same set of conditions that they wanted or that they provided to us at Bernard Schultz, which is in the middle of nowhere, not really anywhere near anybody. You're not having classrooms of kids get in their car and drive away.
Is this something, though, that we're, that could possibly spring out, or we're paying the terms over and over?
Potentially. Here's my frustration, and I'll just say it. I.
I just wonder if we're beating a dead horse only because of the range that we're using.
That's not it. Like, we've approved two out of three pads that have come before us for them. We approved Augustine. We approved Bernard Schultz. This one, we, we denied because of the proximity. Not every company, industry, organization, person is gonna get every single thing that they want. And my, my little bit of frustration with them is, I've said to them over and over again, why can't we do it somewhere else? Why can't we move it to, over towards Coleman Road? Why can't we move it, like, Mark West owns that property off of nine eighty? Like, why can't we move it there? There was, there's a solution to be had somewhere as far as moving it, so it's hitting the same amount of gas without impacting the same group of people. They are choosing this route. They are choosing, I, I don't wanna say to sue us.
The same, you want to take the property or would be different?
It's the same, 'cause you know how North DePauli.
Just say in a different section of the property that's that worst of it.
No, it would be, it would have to be a different owner's property, but your rant.
They probably already made a deal with that, no?
Maybe. I mean, honestly, you can move it from one property off, and it would have less of an impact, and I've even suggested that to them. Ask her on. Like, we've had these, we've had these conversations, and they are just, this is what we want, and if we don't get what we want, we're gonna take you to court, which quite frankly, I have a problem with.
I understand. I'm just, I'm just concerned.
Can you just do me a favor? 'Cause this is being, uh, livestreamed. Could you talk into the microphone?
I'm just curious that how far are we willing to take that?
I, I don't know.
You know, as far as financially, how far is the township supervisor's willing to take it? I mean, we talking, or, I mean, this isn't something that's gonna drag on for years and years?
I don't, I don't think so. I would hope not.
You know, 'cause that could tally up pretty fast.
I mean, I'll be honest with you. Like, I even gave them, and I, you weren't here, but like, one of the things that I presented to them was an emergency, like, if they're, God forbid, it's an emergency, how are we notifying people? One of the things that they said was, and Carol, you can back me up on this, they would go door to door. I said, "That's crazy." Like, you're gonna go to people's doors by the time you get across the thing?
I thought the township powers a.
We do, but should it be our respons- we do. We have a reverse nine-one-one, but the responsibility shouldn't fall on us. And I know there are other, what was the company? Um, was it Olympus? Olympus, that's what it was. It was Olympus. Like, Olympus uses, like, a, an emergency notification system to notify people if there was a catastrophic emergency. And I said, "Why can't we implement, why can't you implement something like that? Something that takes us out of it. It's your pad."
Do we have something like that for the train? 'Cause I just wonder, because I worry what's on that train, more than I worry about the wells, but that's just me.
If you would have a conversation about the train, we'll talk about the train, but we can't keep, like, I can't control that. There's a gigantic difference. Like, the train is completely out of our control. This is not. In any case, so there's been a vote to add it to the agenda. Yeah, you can just step to the microphone.
Uh, Kara Scherden, fifty-eight North DePauli. Um, I, I thought, you know, one of the purposes here was about transparency, and this is not on the agenda, and as everyone is aware, this is an issue that there are people in the township that would need to and want to be informed about. I've heard nothing about what the settlement details are. Maybe that's something I could have got through right to know, but it's my first knowledge that there has been an offer of settlement. I think that it is the right of every person in this township to know the details of the settlement before someone suggests that there be a vote put to, voting on a settlement that people in this township have no knowledge about.
I do agree with that, Darlene. I'm not the chairperson that can, says no. If you would have reached out to Dawn or myself and asked that this be an agenda item, I wouldn't have denied you. I've never denied any board member. Um, this does kind of feel like a sneak attack, and it would have been more appropriate to have it as an agenda item so that residents had the opportunity. I would ask you, can we add this as an agenda item in May for a public vote instead of to allow people the opportunity who, who would, may want to participate in this conversation to be here?
Okay, so it was my mistake that I didn't reach out to, uh, uh, either you or Dawn to put it on the agenda, but when I went up to the plenatory office and I got this information, it was crossed out, it was supposed to be the third day of March, it's been rescheduled to the twentieth day of April. We're gonna wait until May to do the, uh, put it on the agenda. I'm just saying that it's ridiculous, the money that we're spending in court with Range, and Range wins every time.
Not true.
True.
Not true. They, Gretchen just won that case where they challenged my, um, running of the meeting as chairperson, and.
That wasn't the same as drilling, okay?
It was. It was all related to.
Yes, it was rerated.
They sued and asked for a new hearing, specific to Connor Samuel, because they said Cindy Fisher didn't give them a fair hearing, and Judge Emery, I'm happy to provide it to you, which it already has been provided to you, wrote, wrote a very scathing response, which basically said that they were completely out of line and that they had more than a fair hearing. So, they don't always win, and we don't always say no, but we have the obligation and the responsibility to protect the residents in certain areas, even our smallest residents. And so, yes, we, we are choo- a majority of this board is choosing to say no to that particular pad. It does not mean that we are anti-drilling. It does not mean we are opposed to Range resources. It just means that we do not feel that that particular location is the best interest of this township.
So the majority of the board is you, Frankie, and Ronnie?
Three out of five is in a majority, yes.
That's what I said. You didn't do it in public, though. You didn't abstain in public.
Yes, he did. Yes, he did. When we took the vote for, for Connor Samuel, he abstained in public. You're rehashing.
Did you?
Oh, yes. Absolutely, he did.
Is that whenever she took?
You were standing back in the corner videoing it. You could watch your own video.
Okay, but then whenever he had the meeting and.
Had what meeting, darling?
Whenever the Bernard Schultz well and a Connor Samuel came up at the same time, he thought it was a cookie cutter settlement. He said it right here at the, at the board. I wasn't on the board at the time.
I have no idea what she's talking about.
For conditional uses, wasn't it?
Yeah, but I have no idea what she's talking about.
Right, the conditional use votes were completely different for these two pads. I mean, one was a, one was an approval with conditions and one was a denial. I think, is that what we're talk- I, I've lost track of where the conversation has gone.
Tom and Ron negotiated with Range Resources, correct? They come to some agreement on the Bernard Schultz pad.
On Bernard Schultz, yes, there was an agreement, and it was ratified by the board.
'Cause I would just like to point out, we approved, thank you for bringing that up, 'cause I forgot, we said yes to Bernard Schultz. Bernard Schultz passed five-zero, and Range still sued us because they didn't like the conditions that we put on there, and so then we had to go and negotiate and work out the conditions. So if you want to have a conversation with somebody that's wasting taxpayer dollars, you need to go have a conversation with Range. Because they continue to sue us, no matter whether we say yes or no, they take us back to court.
The thing of it is, they got the most money, but we gotta start meeting them. We gotta start meeting them halfway.
We don't have to give in to everything they want because they have money.
Okay, I have one other thing to say. On the draft, what happened to Jason Ortite and a representative from Range Resources will present a check for grant money.
Jason, Jason couldn't make it. It just got bumped a month. Jason couldn't, was unable to make it today, so it got bumped to May at his request.
Okay, so it was dropped, it was dropped, then. We, so.
We got an, Jack, Jack, I'm gonna bail me out here. Jack got an email from Gwen at Jason's office that he was unable to make it today. I asked Jack to reach out to Range and see if we could push it a month so that Jason could be here. That's all.
Supervisor Barney, um, Gwen called me today and said, uh, Representative Ortite can't make it tonight. Um, is there a possibility he could come next, next, uh, month? And I said, "I'll, I'll let everybody know. I'll see availability," and I set it up for next, uh, next board meeting.
So next meeting, Jason Ortite and Range representative will be here to give the grant.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And so, this board, just so we are formal about it, is taking a vote to table this till May, so it can be an actual agenda item. Can I have a motion to that effect?
And what do we do in the meantime with, uh, April twentieth?
So, let me just say two things about that. Um, first, I did inform this board as soon as the new argument was rescheduled for April twentieth, so that's, it's not a new item, um, because the board was aware of that. And second, there's gonna be an argument that day. The judge is not gonna make a decision that day. Um, if I were guessing, she'll probably take several months to make a decision. Um, so, I don't think anything significant's gonna happen between now and May, if, if you want to table it. Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, do I have a motion to table that agenda item? 'Cause we took a motion to add it, so, and we took public comment on it.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I'm staying.
Good choice. Um, if there's no other public comment, this meeting is adjourned.